Good evening. Welcome to March tenth, two thousand twenty Regular Selectmen's Meeting. We have a full board tonight. There's Town Manager, Town Clerk, and Head of the, I can't even, the Ad-Hoc Rec Committee.
Yes.
Please stand with me and salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have February eleventh minutes to approve. Is Ken, Nor, and myself for that one?
I would move the minutes as presented.
That's the last one we're at, huh?
Yeah.
No, no, that's, no, we have another one.
Yeah, I was right there.
So, yeah, second?
Oh, that's right, I have the wrong one here, the February eleventh one, February twenty-fifth, okay. Is, we have motion and a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. And then we have the...
Last one.
Last one, February twenty-fifth one. And that's the one where, that's the one where Nor, Nor and Ken and I were here.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? First public comment, unless Rick's gonna get up and have a public comment and his piece later, is we have no public hearings. I do have a printout for Envision Berwick. Is the Comprehensive Planning Committing Committee will meet on the second Thursday of each month at six P.M. The Comprehensive Plan will set the direction of the town for the next decade and beyond. Public participation is welcomed and encouraged. As the Envision Berwick Committee implements the Town Comprehensive Plan, and it will meet on the third Tuesday of each month at six P.M. And both of those meetings take place in this room here. We have no department reports. We have a presentation from Rick Vandenberg for the Rec Master Plan Review.
I realize my cards are under here. Looking for those. Rick Vandenberg, fifty-one East Pastor Road. I'm the Ad-Hoc Chair of the Recreation Master Plan Group. I came last meeting and we had a lively discussion about the plan and about some thoughts, and we heard some criticism about our plan relative to our use of the term Estherbrook Park and in sort of some recommendations that we had made in the plan about, about the kind of, kind of envisioning this park. We didn't really have a lot of specifics about the park, and some of that is, was left in our plan going back three and a half years when we first started talking about it, and we envisioned maybe some athletic fields and stuff being there. But since there's a municipal use in terms of the fire station there, Tom, I'm sorry, Chairman Wright?
You say Tom.
Okay. You know, expressed the fact that he wouldn't necessarily support our plan with the language in there about Estherbrook Park the way we had it. And so we met since the last time we came in and talked about it, and talked about that, specifically about that part of the plan. And, and I think, in a nutshell, we've sort of heard the concerns about that language, and really, we considered more of what's, what's currently going on over there in the, in the form of doing this, this fire station and maybe some other, some other plans for the property. And what we wanted to say originally, and I think it's the same, and you'll see in what we've, what we've done when we talk about it, what we wanted to say originally is, hey, you know, town, here's some space that you own, you know, consider doing some stuff there that might lead to recreation. And, and really, that was the purpose of that section because we knew that there were a lot of things going back and forth about Estherbrook. You know, there was, there was a senior housing facility planned there, and there were a number of other things that were sort of being bannered about. And so the idea for the, to have the recreation language was just to get the, kind of, a voice about, you know, hey, whatever you do, consider, consider doing some stuff there that could lead to this. And I know that there's been, there was some back and forth with the planning board about the idea of doing, whether it's open space or public space, or whatever, whatever, however you want to refer it. Anyway, we met and we did some things to the plan. Essentially, we, we took the language out, we took all references to Estherbrook Park out because we thought that that was a little premature to call it a park. We changed every, every reference in there to the Public Safety Complex. And we removed, we had, we had that, that section stuck in the athletic field section, and it really didn't belong there anymore since there weren't going to be any soccer fields. So we moved it to Trail, the Trails and Parks section, and we changed the name to Public Safety Complex. And we changed, we removed the, the specific recommendations because we, again, it's still early for that, it's premature. We thought as a group that it might be better just to, again, have a paragraph that said, hey, town, you know, as we go forward and you finish up your plans, your, the, the fire station and other things on, on this parcel, if there's some land left over, consider using it for, for public use, you know. And I guess the term is public space, or it's open space. We use the word in this, in this paragraph on page, it's in section, it's on page twelve, and there's a little paragraph there. We use the term open space in a couple places, and today it was pointed out to me that maybe we were using the term open space wrong, and that that term should be public space. But I just reviewed this again, and I feel like we're, we're really looking at open space. We're referring to it as not capitalized open space, just open space as in available leftover land. That's really what the reference is. And really, this paragraph just gives some guidance in the future that if there's some space, you know, this could be an important connector, or this could be a lot of things that if there's a little bit of space and there are no other uses, and, and the public safety personnel decide that, that it's worth, you know, engaging the public and bringing the, the public onto the, onto the parcels for specific uses, then it might be a good thing to do in the future. And that's really all this says now. We hope that, and I think it's flexibility for all people, people that might have a stake in, in this, in this parcel in the future, and then it also, it's flexible enough for people that are already doing stuff there to kind of get what they want. And I think the community ultimately can make this paragraph whatever they want in the future. So, that's really what we did, and there's really no other changes. We did do a, a fixed sheet that's kind of just shows where all the changes are, but I, I mean, I've really just kind of summed them up. It's really just relative to Estherbrook Park, removing that paragraph and sticking this paragraph in there. And that's it. I mean, that's, that's what I have. You guys, if you have questions relative to that, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll just say that, you know, like Rick said, he and I sat down and went over this and discussed what was going on. And, you know, we worked on these changes together, and I feel that now that this is a complete, you know, plan, and is, I will vote to support it. Any questions, Rick?
Great.
No, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
I think, I think the new language is, certainly supports everything that we've envisioned, or I've envisioned. So I think, I think it's a great plan. So, again, it's a fluid document. So as we move forward, it's, it's nothing concrete. It's a fluid document which provides recommendations which can help guide the community and best practices. I think it's great.
Actually, I'll step right into what you just said at the end, and I think the, the idea about guiding, it was, it was suggested that maybe, you know, I, I would love for this, for this plan to be approved and become an appendix in the existing comprehensive plan, and in the future, the, the comp group can, can pull it in as a chapter in the, in the new plan. You know, the, I guess, the, there's a, there's a, a position available, the, the new Recreation Director position. And I think this document, if approved now, would serve as a bible, if you will, for, for anybody that's coming in, whether they're from the community or from some, some other place if they're coming, to do that Rec Director position. I think this, this will outline kind of what, what we envisioned for the, for the community to, to need.
Excellent. So thank you to everybody who's put all this effort into, into creating this document.
It's been a fun process, and we've been happy to help, so.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. That brings us through unfinished business. Town Manager's report.
I handed out a memorandum of understanding that we've been working on with the library. This has gone through our attorney after numerous rewrites from both the library and the attorney. He thought this was a comprehensive, not comprehensive, but a document that would work as a memorandum of understanding, and covers all the things that he had pointed out. And I sent it off to the library groups that I've been working with, and told them I was gonna hand it out to you, give you a chance to read through it, and we can discuss it next, or next meeting on the twenty-fourth. This will give them time to digest some of it. I think it covers what they were looking for. So just take a look at it, digest it, and make some comments, and we'll get back to it on, on the twenty-fourth.
Two questions. Well, question and a statement. Does this address who owns the property?
Yes, it does.
And who does that end up being?
That's the Berwick Library Association.
Okay.
And it states in that that they are responsible for all capital projects, roof repairs, what have you. Also points out that they have to cover the liability and property insurance on it. We will not do that.
Okay. And my statement is, there's a typo on the very last page.
There is. Oh, no.
It says the budget funding for the BPL US contingent.
Oh, okay, I'll change that.
Small details.
Anything else, Steve?
Oh, yeah, I have one. I'll make those adjustments.
Sorry about that.
I met with Paula this morning, President of the Berwick Library Association, and they're gonna meet tomorrow night and walk through it and see if they, they're okay with it. It's a very high transition for them because they really want this to happen. We're all very supportive of it, but letting go is hard for them because they've committed how many years, Tom, to this library?
Oh, a long time now.
And they've really grown it to a, you know, great facility and programs. We had a fire station meeting this morning, afternoon. We're starting to make some real good progress. If you've driven by, you can see the steel structure is up, and the walls are going up pretty fast. I bet that they probably finished most of the outside walls, and they'll be working on the inside walls. And they also will be putting the roof trusses on probably by the end of the week. So they're moving pretty quick. And we've gone through our winter contingency budget.
We did?
Yeah.
Yes, we didn't have a winter.
Well, it was a thought to it, you know.
Okay.
But that's okay. There's a couple of things we've, we've made some changes, the group has, to save some money. Most of the conversation today had to deal with Central Main Power, dealing with them and getting the power to the building. And we have to go back, the architects and the builder will have to go back and talk a little bit more about that. But it's making good progress.
Where they gonna run the power from?
Right out on Sullivan Street.
Does it run it down the main, from Sullivan Street?
Yeah.
Underground or underground?
Underground, yeah, everything's underground.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put a pole where there's that, this very large culvert, it's gonna have to go on the other side of that, and then from there, we can run it underground. And that'll be good. And they're already working with water and sewer to make those connections fairly soon, so that's a good thing.
That's gonna come off of Sullivan Street too, down that new driveway? You work this way?
So it's, it's been a much better process lately than when we first started.
You've been, you're pretty lucky, the weather's held out really good this one.
Oh, yeah.
Really fortunate.
Yeah. So I'm getting ready to send out paving bids this week. So those will go out. The deadline to have them in will be April twenty-third, and we'll see how those prices come in. And I think that's all I have.
Any other questions of the Town Manager?
We've had thirty-eight applications for the Rec Director position.
Wow.
We have a committee, and Rick is serving on that, of six people, and we started looking at resumes. So it's a little bit, lot to do still.
Thank you, Steve. Selectmen's Communications, I do have some paperwork here, but unfortunately, I haven't gotten around to seeing what it's all about, so I'll quick skip right over that. Approval of Accounts Payable. We have a payroll warrant, two zero three four, from February twentieth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Account payable warrant, two zero three six, from March fifth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of one million two hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. As we have a water warrant, zero three six, from March fifth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents. We have a payroll warrant, two zero three six, for March fifth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And payroll warrant, two zero three seven, from March twelfth, two thousand twenty, is for fifty-eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three?
Twenty-three cents, sorry about that. Is, I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. New business. Oh, boy. Is I gotta go through the warrant, read through the warrant, and then we have to vote on the...
Individual?
Yeah. Is we don't, we don't need a motion for each article. I will just ask if you approve or disapprove.
When we go through it the first time, right?
Yeah.
All at the same time?
Going right, no, no, we're gonna go word by, article by article.
You gotta do each one. Article one, do you approve? Article two, yeah.
Do we really need to approve Article one and two?
Nope.
No.
I can say the, the moderator issues preside over the meeting until, to elect my secret ballot, to selectmen. Is Article three, shall the town vote to adopt proposed amendments to the land use ordinance? The Board of Selectmen recommends a yes or no vote. Those say, say yes?
Aye.
Five, zero. Article four, shall the town vote to adopt proposed amendments to the land use ordinance regarding adult-use marijuana? Exhibit B. I do want to make one change here, because we mentioned this at our last meeting, let me get that, is under the last part of it, under eight point two five point eight, under the permits, it talks about the provision shall be reviewed by the Berwick Planning Board. As I had made the recommendation, that be the Berwick Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And at the time, members of the Planning Board that were here agreed that that should be, so I would like to change that wording.
Okay.
I think that's the only change I saw. Let's see, where was I? Article four. Those in favor of Article four?
With the correction, as modified?
Oh, as modified, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Five, yes. Tried to rush through it, so I forgot that. Article five, shall the, shall the town vote to adopt proposed addition to the marijuana establishing licensing ordinances to the land use ordinance regarding my marijuana establishment? That sounds wordy, but. Shall the town vote to adopt the proposed addition of marijuana establishing licensing ordinance to the land use ordinance regarding marijuana establishments? All those, so you say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five, zero. Article six, shall the town vote to adopt the proposed amendment to subdivision regulations? All those in favor, yes? Five, zero. Is Article seven, shall the town vote to adopt the proposed rezoning request for Lot One at twenty Rochester Street from I-one to C-one in the Village Overlay District?
Yes.
All those in favor? Yes. Five, zero. Article eight, shall the town vote to adopt proposed Recreation Master Plan as amended? All those say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Article nine, you know, we're doing for the money one. Shall the town vote to use up to two mil, two million nine hundred thousand dollars from estimated revenues to reduce the amount to be raised by taxation in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Those say yes?
Yes.
Mark you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Article ten, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred forty-six thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars for the general expense account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Article eleven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred eleven thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars for the town administration account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Article twelve, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars for the town clerk account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article thirteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred, two thousand eight hundred dollars for the planning account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Article fourteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for the assessors' office account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Article fifteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred eighty thousand one hundred fifty dollars for the town hall account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Article sixteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars for the general assistance account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article seventeen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars for the police department account for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Yes?
Yes.
Article eighteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million ninety-one thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars for the fire department account? I'm gonna skip the fiscal year twenty twenty. We all know where it's going. Yes?
Yes.
Article nineteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million one hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars for the public works account? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article twenty, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars for the Berwick Public Library account? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-one, shall the town vote to authorize the expenditure of all revenues received from the State of Maine Urban Rural Initiative Program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, for road improvements as authorized by the program, with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-two, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred forty-six thousand three hundred seventeen dollars for the refuse disposal account? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Article twenty-three, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxes the sum of one hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and one dollars, and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the existing recreation revenue account for a total of two hundred twenty thousand nine hundred and one dollars for the recreation account? The current balance for the recreation revenue account is one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article twenty-four, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred forty-two thousand thirty-seven dollars for debt service to cover this appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? And as authorized by the passage of Article thirty-one and thirty-two at the two thousand sixteen annual town meeting, and Article five at the November sixth, two thousand eighteen referendum election. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article twenty-five, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the community agency appropriations account? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-six, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars for the annual fire protection, i.e. the fire hydrant costs? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-seven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of investing in capital purchase and replacement of fire department apparatus and vehicles for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and place this amount into the fire department capital account established for this purpose with any unspent balances to carry forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-eight, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and authorize its use for road, bridge, and sidewalk construction and repairs, as well as town parking lots and public ways, and including expenses for curbing, drainage, and engineering fees when required, with the funds to be used in conjunction with the State of Maine Urban Rural Initiative Program, and the unspent balances to be carried forward each year? Yes?
Yes.
Article twenty-nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for use for road, bridge, and sidewalk construction and repairs, as well as town parking lots and public ways, and including expenses for curbing, drainage, and engineering fees when required, with the funds to be used in conjunction with the State of Maine Urban Rural Initiative Program, is when unspent balances to be carried forward each year? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Unspent balances, we ever have any unspent balances in the road account?
Usually, this year especially.
Article thirty, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars as a first lease payment for the purchase of one new police cruiser for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and place this amount into the police capital equipment account established for this purpose, with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease purchase agreement on terms that deemed appropriate, with a balance to be repaid over a period of no longer than five years?
So you're, hold on a second. So you're not asking us to put in twenty thousand dollars a year for five years, right?
No, that, this is just the first lease payment.
So that's just the first lease payment?
Yeah.
Okay, so every year we'll go through and put another, it seems like a heavy lease payment to me.
You ought to see the price of these vehicles.
How much are they?
And that includes equipment. What they do, what we do here, we, we always put the first lease payment, we pay it out of the capital reserve account, and then they go, for the following three payments, it goes, comes out of their budget, operating budget.
So how much is the cruiser gonna cost?
This particular cruiser is anywhere between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars.
What's particular about it?
It's a Ford Interceptor, you know, it's special. It's a Ford Interceptor, you know, it's special.
So it's a Ford, it's not a, it's a Sagin or?
It's a.
Explorer or something like that?
It's like an Explorer body.
Okay, alright.
All-wheel drive.
Any other questions, the town manager?
Nope.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Article thirty-one, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $42,000 for fiscal year 2020, 2021 and authorize its use for continuing, to continue addressing storm drainage system outfall issues identified by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection during an audit of the town's stormwater drainage system and place this amount into the planning capital reserve account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Article thirty-two, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 and authorize the Board of Selectmen to hold it in a contingency account and to use it to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that might occur during the fiscal year and with unspent balances to be carried forward each year? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article thirty-three, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $24,000 for the federal stormwater program for fiscal year 2020, 2021 and place this amount into the account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article thirty-four, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,750 for economic development and place this amount into account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Article thirty-five, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 for emergency management and place this amount into the account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Article thirty-six, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $62,500 from the unassigned fund balance for self-contained breathing apparatus, personal protective gear, mobile radio, and CPR equipment and place this amount into account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, could we, could we spell that out for the, for the general public, please? Can we what?
SCBA.
Kind of break it down.
Yeah, we can spell it.
Yeah. Self-contained breathing apparatus, yes.
Very good.
Mobile gear, radio.
Yep.
Do you want CPR spelled out?
Yes. Might as well, yeah.
Is it usually around $62,000 a year?
Cardio pulmonary resuscitated. What they're asking for this year, it is, yep.
So last, what was it last year?
I think it was $50,000.
So it's always around the kind of?
Yeah, it's always around that.
As we get more guys on the force and we're gonna boost it up. Yep. I forgot to ask, did I say yes on that one?
Yes.
I have five yeses, but. Let's do it again, just to make sure.
Article thirty-seven, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 from the unassigned fund balance for fuel, fuel tank replacement of public works as required by the DEP? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what that price is gonna be, a hundred grand?
Plus we are replacing the software on the pumps. So we have $20,000 put aside, but that's the cost of just doing the tank work.
Okay.
Article thirty-eight, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the unfunded liabilities account and place this amount into the account established for this purpose with unspent balances to be carried forward each year until fully expended? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article thirty-nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for fiscal year 2020, 2021 which begins July for us and consecutive fiscal year, fiscal years for grant matching funds to be placed into the account and carried forward each year? I'll read the note on that since I messed it up. This funding will be used for 20% matching funds for the Kidri, Kidri area. Kidri area MOP, the Maine DOP transportation programs and community development block grants if awarded? Yes?
And we have been awarded one this year.
We have, we have been awarded some. Yes?
Yes.
Article forty, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $41,600 from the unassigned fund balance and to authorize its use for the purchase of police department capital items including radios, taser equipment, firearms replacement, furniture, three laptop replacements, server, and modems?
How often does a firearms have to be replaced?
I think it's every five to six years.
I believe the chief said six years, I think.
I think he said six years.
Yeah, when they did, when they presented the budget, yeah, I asked him about it.
I don't know about. I don't know about the tasers, but.
I think, I think the tasers is, they're old enough that they didn't, had to get the parts for them.
So we're gonna get new tasers?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
So this one's highlighted.
Article forty-one.
This needs discussion.
We need discussion on this. Is, the article reads, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $300,000 from the unassigned fund balance and authorize its use for the purchase and installation of a full-size elevator at town hall? Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Town Manager, I met with, having Mike Lassels been doing the design work for us at a very reasonable price and he and I and Tom sat down and talked and he has his pine.
Brook?
Pine what?
Pine Brook?
Pine Brook Construction, they do elevator work, a lot of elevator work. And to get us a better price, so we had to push the buttons hard today to get them, but we finally got a price from them along with full cost of Mike Lassels with a mechanical design part of it. I think we have pictures here of it. Roughly, the whole cost is over half a million dollars. And when we first started this, we were looking at, I thought, $300,000. My chairman here said, you won't get it done for that much price, but we'll see. And so I'm not sure where to carry this. We, this funding, the $300,000 was coming out of the unassigned fund balance, which is, so it doesn't impact the taxpayers. But I don't wanna take 500, another additional 200,000 out of that. So I'm not sure.
If you take the 300, then do it again next year for another couple.
Yeah, we can, that would be my recommendation.
We can't change that to a half a million? Did we?
Well, we could.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna take the extra 200,000 out of the unassigned fund balance. Especially where, you know, this year, what's happened recently with the economy and everything, you know, is we're not quite sure where we're gonna be going, what we might need to do. I, I had, I had talked to Steve and said, let's just do it. But is, over the last week or so, is, you know, is to amend it, you know, it says, and authorize its use for the purchase and installation of a full-size elevator. Is, it doesn't say we have to use it this year, but do we need to make?
I, I think we changed the article to read to put it into a reserve account for that purpose and to carry it forward for any unspent amounts.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that.
That's what I would do.
You know, 'cause the other thing too is, if we're gonna be doing this to make this ADA compliant, you know, I, I think we need to look at making the town hall more ADA compliant, which is gonna include restrooms, you know, and. So this would, this would be, this would be a way that we can start this and get it going and then look at what happens next year and if things go well, we can put another 300,000.
So we should write this up to, not only do that, but also do other ADA compliance? So we can use that 300,000 to make the shithouse bigger or some doorways bigger during this year maybe?
Right.
Well, we're gonna, we haven't got prices on that, but one of the things that we are planning on doing is looking for grant money and there should be grant money out there for ADA compliance.
For public spaces.
So this will give us some time to do that as well, which I think makes more sense.
Get some other pricing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
This is just a rough number, but I think he's pretty much on.
It's right on where I said it would probably be, half a million.
So.
Do you have wording?
We can just add the phrase that we use another sum to be placed into a reserve account and carry forward each year until fully expended?
Cool.
Does that work?
True.
Probably should see the wording before we vote on it, I would think.
Well, I need a vote.
You need a vote?
Tonight, I guess.
Okay. Well, it'd be, be the exact same it is, but just adding the phrase, what would it be again, Patty?
So it'll read authorize its use for the purchase and installation of a full-size elevator at town hall to be placed into a reserve account.
For that purpose.
For that, for this purpose.
Just the elevator purpose then?
Yeah.
Yes, and carry forward each year until fully expended?
I think we can plan over this coming year to get better prices on bathroom changes and things like that. And with the elevator design and where we were gonna put it, it warrants putting a bathroom on the second floor so you have places where people can come out, a handicap, unisex bathroom. So when they're in the auditorium, they don't have to come up and down the stairs.
Right.
As well. So.
Unbelievable.
It would make us ADA compliant.
Well, if you have the elevator and they don't have to go upstairs.
That's right.
Right, and they go downstairs.
Except those on ADA compliant.
The bathrooms that aren't, we do have one.
Unless the elevator's in, we don't have to do the bathroom.
No, bathrooms aren't compliant.
You're not compliant now?
We have in each room, each bathroom.
Well, yeah, yeah, there is, there is, there is one stall, right?
Yeah, there's one stall on each bathroom.
I do too.
You can take them home.
We have this conversation last night.
Alright, is, we have Article forty-one as amended, any further discussion?
Nope.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Article forty-two, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum not to exceed $120,000 from the unassigned fund balance and authorize its use for the installation of radiant heat in the apparatus bay of the new fire station? Yes?
Yes.
So this is what we've done with the, the floor, the heat now in the fire station?
Yeah, this is just the apparatus bay. They're gonna put radiant heat.
Not the whole building?
No.
Just the apparatus?
Just the apparatus.
Price is higher than the number we talked about before, isn't it?
Well, they were throwing at us $113,000, so.
That didn't include the, the, the cost of the.
So this all got missed, this all got missed?
No, this was, this was always, always put in as an alternate, you know.
But it wasn't, the number wasn't carried in a bid?
No.
Why?
No, it was, 'cause it was carried as an alternate.
What'd they carry for a number?
I think it was $113,000 as an alternate.
So we covered it already in the building, right?
No, 'cause it was.
Oh, we don't have, we could, okay, so it wasn't an alternate, it was funded, non-funded alternate?
Right.
And we're hoping that, and we were talking today about the budget and we've found some savings because we're not putting carpet in, we're putting tile in the areas like the training rooms and stuff like. Shouldn't have.
That's crazy.
We have some areas where we've saved some money. There's another one, I can't think of what it was, an $11,000 savings. So whereas we're moving forward, we're hoping we'll find more savings and it will fit in within the budget.
How'd we make out with the doors?
We finally got the doors. And the price, the price that we first got was, it wasn't much less because they put it back out to bid and we have another bid that's around $90,000.
So we have the money in the budget, that budget?
For that, yes. So, okay.
Okay, has we voted on that one, correct?
Uh, no, I didn't, Mark, were you a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Article forty-three, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 from the unassigned fund balance and authorize placing it in the recreation reserve account to be used for capital projects? Yes?
Yes.
Article forty-four, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with landowners for purchase of property that allows for the expansion of Memorial Field? And note on that, the funding for the purchase will be used from impact fees that are allowed to be used for these types of community projects?
So we, we, do we know what those, what land we're gonna purchase?
No, we're still talking to.
So I wanna know before I.
Well, that's gonna have to come before us, before it's ever.
So we're gonna be able to go look at it and all the?
We are, there's a couple of parcels that we're looking at, good-sized parcels that border, border it.
I thought it was too low.
No, no, Rick and I actually walked around out back.
Oh, it's not too low, huh?
And it, it, no, when I first went out, it looked like there was a lot of wetlands, but it actually, is, is a stream that runs through it that drains the property very well, actually.
Maybe we could build a pond for irrigation, instead of using town water irrigation, we use a pond?
But what this would do, this would just give, this would just authorize us as a selectmen to enter into a negotiation itself. Is, yes?
Yes.
Those in favor? Article forty-five, shall the town vote to authorize the use of interest money for the Lena Clark, Lena Clark Trust Fund Interest Account when there are major repairs or maintenance needs at the town hall? Yes?
Yes.
Mike, yes? Article forty-six, shall the town vote to charge interest on unpaid taxes at a rate of 9% per annum and to set the date when taxes can, when taxes are committed for fiscal year 2020, 2021 with said interest to be collected after October 16th, 2020 and April 16th, 2021 and allow the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes prior to the tax commitment date? Yes?
Yes.
Article forty-seven, shall the town vote to set the interest rate of 4% as allowed by state law as a rate to be paid to taxpayers who pay amounts in excess of amounts, finally assessed and authorize any such interest paid, uncollectible taxes, or abatements granted to be charged against the annual overlay? Yes?
Yes.
That's it. On the next, we have the Teamsters Labor Contract Approval, but we're gonna have to go into executive session first, correct Steve?
Well, I can tell you what, we've come to an agreement based on the lease temporary TA for what we proposed with the grid with a few minor changes, but didn't change, change the public works a little bit, but not by much. They're meeting on Friday, this Friday morning to vote on it. My request and the finance director's request is to vote on the contract pending if they vote to approve it. If they don't vote to approve it, then it's not on board. That way she can clean up her books and get everybody back paying, so.
So do we need to go into executive session first?
I would, I don't think so, unless you have questions, specific questions that we should talk in an executive session.
Any of the board members need to?
No.
No.
Is, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Quick claim deeds, we have none. We have one abatement was outstanding right now. Is.
Talk about that?
Yeah, if you would.
We have a house up on 107 Sullivan Street?
It's, I'm sorry, it's under 18 other business non-agenda, it didn't make the agenda, but.
Okay, yeah.
There's a deadline for the 15th, so we need to have it in. Sorry, Steve.
I'll just bring you up to date, on the 15th, it will become your no, you don't have to vote on it, it's the way I'm reading this.
Right.
But what we've done is the code enforcement officer went out to the site, did an inspection and she has found several violations to condemn the building, one of them being a structural, it's unsafe construction, it doesn't meet any aspects of what code is for building. And the other is inspection for, it has black mold throughout the dwelling. There was water at one time in the basement, I'm sure that was the cause of that. The owner has been contacted, it has been posted with this big condemned sign on the door. People should stay off the property and out of the building because it's not safe. And the owner is going to be required to get a structural. Um, and the owner is going to be required to get a structural engineer to, uh, determine the actual integrity of the building, uh, and also inspection of, uh, the black mold. It doesn't need to be remediated.
Why do we gotta give him an abatement?
You're not.
It says a re- recommended abatement of six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Well, is that, that, that was when I brought up the whole thing about this whole-
I'm not gonna go for an abatement for this guy.
No.
Right, well, that, that's why, that's what started this, is when it first came up.
You're not taking any action, you, you're denying, it's basically denied as of the fifteenth.
Just let it sit, if nothing happens. It, it, you know the property, right? The one up on Pine Hill.
I know the landlord better.
Yeah, and, uh, we, you know, the town has been through this once before.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we, we tried doing this once before with structural engineers and somehow he got somebody to write it off, right?
That was a while ago, yeah.
And, uh-
I'm not doing that, we're not gonna-
Yeah, yeah, so.
We were after him over the last three years, just to get the area cleaned up.
Then we put the wrecking ball right to it.
Yeah.
Let him deal with that.
So if we do nothing, then, you know, it just continues on as is, so.
Look, it burns, we're gonna take care of it. The neighbors have to look at it.
Yeah, the neighbors don't care for it, but, yeah.
Um, all right?
They can deny if they want to.
Yeah.
Is, um, is, uh, second public comment, Rick, you got any second public comment? Now you said enough first time around. Uh, so we don't need an executive session at this time. Uh, we've done our other business non-agenda items.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.